So we'll get started with the invocation by Mr. Ayers. Y'all please join us.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, we just want to give you thanks for letting us be here and being able to represent the town and to do the business of the town. I do ask that you give us wisdom and the knowledge to do the right thing. As always, it's important that we just try to do the best we can in every situation that we're confronted with. I want you to take and, you know, watch over all of our service members, whether they're in the public or abroad. And with that, I say, thank you, and we pray these things in your Son's holy name.
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the liberty of republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, I called the meeting to order, and so I don't think we have any public comments. So one gentleman was here, the man was here to talk about number nine, and Alex is giving him his card and gonna get in touch with him. So we got the agenda approval, so a couple of things. Oh yeah, the consent agenda, thank you Brad. Stephen would like to take A off and add it to the regular agenda and talk, get some specifics on that. So let's make that number seven, replace, well, make it number nine. Number nine, that's one of the changes we're gonna make tonight. Alex and staff wants to take off number nine and have it talked about when we're in budget session, which is coming up, March 10th, I believe is our first meeting. So, and then my recommendation, the same thing on number seven, since it has to do with money, take that off, and we'll talk about it at our March 10th meeting. And then, so let's make one A now number seven. All right, any other changes, added additions? All right, can I get a motion on those changes?
Yeah, so moved, so make a motion to approve the agenda with the following. Items number seven, employee incentive pay priority, and number nine, private S and inspection fees. Add a new number, I guess, farmer's market fee schedule.
Yeah, number seven. We'll just slide it into number seven slot. All right, motion by Mr. Richardson, second by Mr. Shaw, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's have it, all righty. So, the first up is our...
Consent agenda.
Consent agenda there, so we have the Stinson Farm reimbursement and indemnity agreement. I had to ask, it was a lengthy document, and so I had to ask Alex to explain it to me. So does anybody have any questions about it? All right, can I get a motion to approve?
Motion to approve consent agenda, that was adjusted.
All right, motion by David, second by Lori, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, let's have it, all right. Next up is our conditional zoning 24 dot 10, oh, excuse me, agenda approval. Did I go out of order? Or approve the agenda?
Yeah.
Not to, then I did it.
That's all right, yeah. So conditional zoning 24 dot 10 dot 01, it was recessed from 210, 2025, so I'll open the public hearing and turn it over to Max.
Pull up the document real quick. Okay, so this is a continuation from the last meeting for CZ 24 10 01, conditional zoning for Assembly of God. The primary request is to expand their daycare use and continue their religious uses on site. I did go over many conditions that I've requested of the applicant, and the only thing that's really changed is the request from, that showed up last meeting about the dirt bike concerns. The applicant has presented a few different options for the council to consider, so adding a condition, which would be condition number six, for proposed riding schedule options. The applicant would like to choose either weekends, so like Saturdays and Sundays between 11 and 5, or 2 to 7, which is the staff recommendation, one of those times, because it limits it to two days, or weekdays between 3 and 7 PM. So that's up to the discussion for council of what, you know, they prefer. So the applicant is seeking input on that, and staff does recommend approval because they aren't changing their uses, and it does address some of the dirt bike concerns that the applicants have, I did, or the residents had. One thing I did want to point out, that dirt bikes, we don't have any restrictions in our code of ordinance for dirt bikes, and these times, these schedule options, still meet the noise ordinance times, so they don't violate any of the code of ordinances on that.
Definition of dirt bike broad enough to include any motorized off-road vehicle?
We could, no, I would say we could also add the condition saying any motorized off-road vehicle, including dirt bikes, RTVs, to be only used on these certain days and times as the condition six. And the applicant is here as well, if you want to talk to him more about that, the way they use dirt bikes, he'd be able to go into detail on that.
Been any communication, Max, between the applicant and the property owners that were here last week talking about the noise, any communication?
I have not received any communication since that last public hearing.
I don't really have an issue with the dirt bikes. I feel like, you know, I don't know when they have their dirt bike, whatever they riding around. You know, is this gonna be an imposition, or is it gonna, they can't do it certain times? I mean, I don't know, you know, if I have 20 acres of land, can I, no, can I just, ride around on my dirt bike?
Currently, yes. There's no ordinance requirements preventing that at the moment.
So why are we restricting them?
Well, we received complaints from residents surrounding this property about the dirt bikes and the noise it creates at the last council meeting, and we received an influx, and the applicant has agreed to minimize the disruptions by agreeing to these schedule options.
Is the applicant, whoever, and the people in the church are really okay with that, or are they just...
They, I mean, I would let them speak on that, but this is, these are, I did talk to the pastor, and these are the times that he was willing to agree upon, one of these three pretty much options.
Only one of them?
Or it could be all of them. Right now, there's no restriction.
I'm sort of on the same page you are, Lori. Now let's hear from the pastor, I got a couple questions for him.
Yeah, of course, yeah.
Hi, everyone.
Hey there, how you doing?
Very good.
Could you give us your name and...
Sandra Pereira.
The question I had, do you have any services during the week?
Yes, we do. We have Monday night, we have prayer meeting, Wednesday we have Bible study, Friday we have small groups in the house, and then we have a youth group in the church, and Saturday we have the main service.
Okay. So on those Mondays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, some of the youth ride around on the, on the vehicles?
If they do that, it's going to be between 3:00 PM and 6:00 PM, because before 3:00 PM, we have a daycare, and so we do, right now, we do not allow anybody weekdays before 3:00 PM. In the winter, we don't use, we use three, four times in the title winter, between November and March, because of the rain and there's a flood zone, so it doesn't dry. So in the summer is when we use the most.
So the services start about 6?
Uh, 7:30.
Oh, 7:30, so that's why the 3 to 7:00 PM is up there.
Yeah.
Any questions for the pastor?
And when we say that we accept weekdays, if we go, probably it's going to be once a week, may, maybe twice, but it's not an everyday thing.
Is that what your schedule ordinarily is, you don't go every day, you have certain times now?
No, right now, we don't have a time. Right now, what we have is, we do not allow them to go, anybody to go before 10:00 AM or after 7:00 PM. So that's what, that's what we do, we do not allow anybody, any day, weekdays or weekends.
So would you rather have, rather, instead of just Wednesdays have, I'm not sure I'm what you really want.
I, I prefer to be the way that it is now, that we can continue to use as we can, and as I just told my neighbor, I said, if he comes to me and show me where he lives, I can change the way of the bikes there, and, and we can do that, that's not a problem. So my preference is if we can continue to use as we use now would be the best, but if we have to have a time that the city is going to give us, we are going to obey.
So you, so now you don't, nobody uses it after 7:00 PM?
Exactly, exactly. And not before 10:00 AM. And again, is, even, even in the summer is once, twice a week.
Pastor, I'm, I'm a little bit confused. Are these sanctioned or organized by the church, or is it just open for any youth member to bring their bike and ride by themselves, or are they group events? I'm just confused about that.
No, it's not, it's not an event, it's a...
Event, it's just open every day, and it could be used every day, right? But it's normally just used once a week by experience?
Exactly, exactly.
And on the weekends, it may be used?
But at last meeting, I believe you said, the only people allowed on your property are members of your church.
Exactly. So we, we have about a total of 10 bikes. Normally goes two, three, sometimes go five and six, and that's what I think when, when we got the noise, but that's what it is.
When you say you have 10 bikes or so, that doesn't mean the church owns the bikes and stores them?
No, 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 yeah.
You bring them...
Yeah, all the members who has 30 bikes would be about 10, 10, yeah.
How many bikes at a time would be on the fields?
Sometimes five, six, most of the time, two, three.
Get extra loud with five or six bikes?
Yes.
All right.
Yeah, we, we have 25 acres of land, and we cannot use for anything, because most is in a flood zone, we cannot build or anything. So, and with the dirty bikes, is a way that we clean there, is we maintain, and then we have fun.
You weren't at the last meeting, I forgot, I didn't explain it in detail, I apologize. Yeah, okay. Yes, the conditional zoning for, the primary purpose is to expand their daycare, but they ha, they happen to also have a dirt bike use on the site that was not brought up until right before the meeting last meeting, and this, it wasn't, the council requested just to talk, more research into the dirt bike for this meeting. So I went into more detail the last meeting, I apologize.
The only, only real question I have is that, obviously, if you're expanding the daycare, does that mean you're gonna have more kid, I mean, like, younger kids? Is there, and since, with the motorbikes and things like that there, I guess, while there's kids actually there, is there precautions that you're gonna take to make sure that they don't get back there while they're...
Yeah, we do right now.
Okay.
The area that we ride is, the kids doesn't, doesn't go there, no.
Okay, yeah, because it's back in the flood plain and whatnot, right?
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you, sir. Well, under the same vein of what Lori was talking about, my recommendation is on weekdays, just follow, do both of those, weekdays 3 to 7:00 PM, and then on Saturdays and Sundays, I would say 11 to 7:00. My recommendation to council.
I, I don't, I'm having some trouble, because I don't feel like, I mean, this is a conditional zoning to build out a daycare, I, I feel like we're legislating with a conditional zoning to some extent.
Or, or just leave it alone.
I mean, I mean, we have, we have noise ordinances in place. I, I understand the, the issues here, I just feel like this ain't the right place to address it, in my opinion, from a legislative point of view.
I can live with that, too. I'll close the, anybody else, anybody wish to speak? Yes, sir. Yeah. Just come up.
And we had talked, and I really appreciate him, he's a, he's a nice man, and I, we really appreciate the fact that he's, oh, sorry, Albert Franklin, I was here last, two weeks ago.
Right, and your address?
Penton Onyx Lane, Indian Trail. So we're right across Goose Creek from where the dirt bike track is. I mean, those, when they come around, and, and it's, when there's five or six bikes going, and they're going for hours out there, they're coming within 30 yards and 40 yards of our houses. And if you ever heard, if you ever been at the back end of the dirt bike, they're loud. They come right around, right up to the edge of the creek, and they make their turn right there. So they're blasting their exhaust and their noise right back at the houses in those, in those cul-de-sacs that are over there. So it's not like it's one individual that is riding his dirt bike on his property, that's, that's one thing. It's five or six, you know, and when the weather's nice, they're out there every day. So in your evenings, when you're sitting on your porch, you're having one bike after the other come, and, you know, this loud noise, it's not like somebody's cutting their grass for 30 minutes and they're done, and they go away, and, you know, everybody's lawnmower makes some noise. This is, this is loud noises coming out of the back of a dirt bike, and there's a lot of them, and in the, like I said, in the good weather, it's every day that that's taking place. And all of the neighbors in that area are really quite annoyed by the dirt bikes, and I do appreciate, he and I chatted a while, and he said, yeah, I'll try to rearrange the track so it doesn't, and that would be appreciated if you guys move forward with that, and we would appreciate that if you, if that's what your, your thing is, but I will tell you, from the people that live in those cul-de-sacs, and a lot of them have small children, it's quite annoying. So, in fact, if that has anything to do with the decision, we'd appreciate it if we didn't have it. We don't really see that has anything to do with a church and a daycare center, which I, I think is a wonderful thing to happen.
All right, thank you, sir.
Yeah, and I want to clarify, I, I'm not trying to downplay that there's an issue here, I just don't feel like attaching this to a conditional zoning legislatively makes sense to me. That, that's all I'm trying to say.
All right. I'll close the public hearing, and so...
Another venue, Mayor, that you know of? Loud and disturbing noise in a residential...
Not, not, not that I'm aware of.
Yeah, I think that's, that's where I'm struggling here. I feel, I feel like hearing a couple of different things. All the time, five or six bikes at a time. Pastor says it happens maybe once a week, that doesn't add up, so that's not, that's not helping the situation. So I'm okay with the conditional zoning, I always have been, I was on the subcommittee, I think, with Lori on this one. Right place to maybe legislate it or codify it, I am just curious of what other remedies are there. If I lived in a home that had dirt bikes multiple days a week, four or five of them riding, I would be disturbed, and I would want a solution. I'm not, I'm not ready to vote on this until we can talk about that. Now, y'all can vote me out, I'm, y'all can vote out. Problem here that we ought to talk about, we've got dirt bikes in a residential community.
I mean, I think the noise ordinance can address the situation. I mean, it states under 93.02, it shall be unlawful for any person, groups of persons, or property owner to create, assist in creating, or allow any unreasonably loud and disturbing noise in town. And then, when you look towards measurement, you look at time of day, proximity to residential structures, whether the noise is recurrent or constant, volume and intensity, whether the noise has been enhanced in volume or range by any type of electronic or mechanical means, the character and zoning of the area, whether the noise is subject to being controlled without unreasonable effort or expense to the creator thereof. I mean, there's more to it than that, but...
There's a time of day, though, it's between, I think it's between 7 and 9, or, excuse me, 9 and 7:00 PM, 9:00 AM.
That's, that's specific for, right, garbage trucks and lawn mowers?
It's like the last, last sentence.
That's amplified sound, like...
I could think we're, okay, I thought I was considering it amplified, because of the, the bike noise amplified, okay.
I don't think that's amplified, I think if you would have a speaker or something like that.
Okay.
From my neighbor, who lives further away than I do, from his backyard, he took a video with, you'd like to see it, I'll show it to you.
Send it, send us to Max.
All right.
Well, it sounds like we're split here, and I'd like to get the, the reason why he came to us off the, off the plant, so, you know, so he can get started with his, expanding his daycare. And then, it's two separate issues, it sounds like y'all are saying.
Yeah, for, for me, it just feels like tying it to this conditional zoning, I mean, I, I don't want to discount that there's a problem here, I just don't know if I aligning it with this makes sense to me.
All right.
How do they get grouped together?
When we had our last meeting, council felt like this was an issue that we need to address before we approve the conditional zoning. And we had some residents come, Miss Franklin, and another lady came, so that's how they got locked together, so...
Is there a decibel condition?
We've had that before, we've gone back and forth on that. The issue with that is if you have the decibel reader, you might only have one or two in the department, and if the sound's going on, and that officer's on the other end of town, you know, doing a rec investigation, it could be tied up for some hours, so that's, there's no foolproof way to do it. I mean, we could, we could go back to that, but that was, that created issues as well.
You mean, times that the dirt bikes are out there, and the officer can't get there?
Not specific to this situation, but I'm just saying, in the history, the town's gone back and forth between using the decibel readers and not, because, I mean, it's hard, what is annoying to one person may not be annoying to someone else, so if you have the decibel, it, it's great when it's working and available, it's a great tool to have.
And is there, I don't know any of the numbers in decibels, but is there a limit? I mean, is there some number that they can only go to? I mean, like, that would be, that or not?
Could research something to put in the code of ordinances instead of the conditional zoning at a future meeting?
That seems like the way that council's going, Max.
Just wanted to...
All right, let's do that, let Max research it, bring something back, but let's, let's address the conditional zoning tonight. So we have the staff's conditions on there, the applicant, the pastor, and the church have agreed to all of those staff conditions, so staff is recommending approval of conditional zoning 24 dot 10 dot 01, so what's the pleasure of the council?
A question, what's the square footage of the addition?
The addition square footage, I have the site plan up here. I just can't remember the top of my head, do you remember that? Okay, I will zoom in. 7,834 square feet.
So do you, I, I think, Max, you had someplace on here that you needed to do a, it wasn't a traffic study, but was the traffic going in and out, is that...
So that's for future expansions, so, and if they decide to do additional expansions to the church or daycare use, they may be required by engineering to submit a TIA.
So we're not, you're not...
Currently, no.
Okay.
Mayor, I'll, I'll support the rezoning, I'll make the motion, I would also like to include the motion of the restrictions of the hours that the applicant has agreed to, and I'm, I'm okay with both A and B, because it feels like there's been a, that would be a reduction in the hours allowed. Right now, I believe it's 10 to 7, the pastor said, and then all day on Saturdays, so I think we get some improvement with both A and B, or, take out the or and. But here's what I think we need, even our write-up says typical riding sessions last an hour and a half, two hours. It almost, it almost feels disingenuous that we're, we're, we're writing things that may not be accurate. No, no offense to Mac, I think that Mac's is just what we're understanding, but what I don't understand is the length of time, the number of dirt bikes and other vehicles, how many days, and all of that. So I don't know that I want to make that part of the motion, but I would vote for that motion, which is a restriction, but I would then ask staff to figure out some way to catalog the number of hours, number of incidences, number of complaints even, over the next 12 months, and let's just see what we really are dealing with. Then, I think you deal with it through the noise, that's what we're saying.
Well, I got a different reading, it sounded like to me the council wanted to keep these two separate, so you're free to make your...
I'm, I'm gonna make the motion anyway, but I, I think we take an opportunity to solve a little bit of the problem, and I do think it's a problem. So I'll make the motion on the board there.
So which one, which, Saturday, Sunday's got, is it or...
No, it's and, limited time on Saturday and a four-hour window on weekdays, which is a restriction from where it is today, I believe.
So Saturday and Sunday would be, and I'm, I'm just putting it in words here, Saturday and Sunday would be like 11 to, to 7?
I would do the 2 to 7.
I would do the 2 to 7.
But what I'm really after is getting the zoning through, so they can get on about the expansion of a good use, but then... Out there on a week-to-week basis, if it's once a week, and it's two hours, an hour and a half, we don't have a problem. If it's multiple days, and there are five bikes running for six hours straight, we have a problem, in my opinion. But even there, I agree with my colleagues, that this probably isn't the right place to wedge in a noise ordinance issue. That's why I'll make the motion.
All right, so on Saturday and Sunday, you're saying 2 to 7. What are you saying on weekdays?
Okay, can, can, can...
I said 2 to 7, and on, on the weekends, and 3 to 7 on the weekdays.
All right, got it.
With a review in, in a year.
My, my only concern is, real quick, Brad, is that we, we can never change this, ever. We can't ever change this.
We can address the noise ordinance, I think, that's where we're headed.
But, but, I mean, this is a conditional zoning, it will be stuck to this property forever, until it's rezoned at some point in the future. That's my concern, is that we're sticking this, like, if we come back in, in the future, and we feel like this doesn't apply, we can't change it. Whereas if it's part of the ordinance, and we find out something different from gathering this information, we can change it, but with this, it's stuck with this piece of land forever. That's, that's my biggest concern there. I mean, even if it gets sold to somebody, this stays with it.
All right.
That's, that's my biggest concern.
So we got a motion by Mr. Richardson, and any further discussion? Yeah, ma'am, wait just a minute, we got an order we need to follow here, so...
So, Brad's...
Yeah, I think after Steve's comment, I'd like you to not second my motion. Yeah, I, I think after Steve's comment, I'd like you to not second my motion. I'd be okay with that. I'll withdraw my motion. Steve makes a really good point. I'll, I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay. Let me reopen the public hearing, so this lady can have her, her three minutes. Yeah, you gotta come up here and tell me your name and address, please.
Hi, Ashley Edwards, and it's 2005 Hampshire Court. I just had a question about what the current hours are for the riding schedule now, and how it compares to the proposed riding schedule.
They have no schedule now.
Okay, so right now, it's any time of the day, any day of the week?
That's right.
Okay, so if we go forward with the rezoning, then you're saying we have to select whatever timeframe would work for this? Or is it possible, I guess, sorry, I'm coming in late from work, so...
Well, we're taking it off the board. We're gonna review it, and it's gonna be status quo for right now.
Okay, so then, for the current dirt biking, that's not addressed? That can continue on as often and as many dirt bikes as they wish? Is that basically...
What we're trying to, what we're trying to say real quick here is that, I mean, putting this type, I mean, putting this in a conditional zoning is tying a legislative element to a piece of property. And so, that's sort of like saying, "We don't like red cars, so people can't drive on the street." Okay? I mean, it's, they're tied only because it's happening on this property, but it's probably from a legislative point of view, we probably shouldn't do it in a conditional zoning. While we agree that there's a problem, and we want to address it, the right way to address it is through the noise ordinances, not through attaching this. Because this stays on the property, even if the church moves and sells it, this gets stuck with that property forever. They can't, we can't, we can't come back later and tighten it up or change it, because it's tied to a zoning change, which just...
All right.
It, it just doesn't make sense.
Okay. And I think the majority of, like, our neighbors that we've spoken to, they're all in agreement that yes, the church should expand their daycare facility. Like, I think everybody's on board with that. I think, like, all of our biggest concerns is around the dirt bike noise and, like, consolidating those hours. So, I did want to make that clear. We're fully in support of, like, an expanded daycare.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, I'll close the public hearing, and so, we have, what's the, actions board wants to take on the conditional zoning for the daycare?
So I do have a question, because we do have an action item that's being created. Will that be created as a new item for the agenda, or just part of this request?
What, to address the noise ordinance?
Well, I think there is a research request.
Yeah, we don't need to make that a, a motion.
Okay.
This, this conditional zoning is separate.
So how will this be addressed?
We, well, we've told Max what we want, so...
Yep.
You said 12 months?
After hearing Steve's logic, I think it makes perfect sense. I think we approve the rezoning absent any restrictions on noise. However, after that, I'd like to ask the manager to spend some time over the next six to 12 months, spring, summer, just helping us catalog what is the true problem. We've heard wildly different stories about the frequency, and it could be honest, it literally could be, these perceptions are different about what's really happening. I'm okay with the reason...
Yeah, yeah, we've, we've got it. All righty.
You'll make the motion.
I'll make the motion. I'll make the motion to approve ZZ 24 dot 10 dot 01 with no additional, without the dirt bike subcondition applied to it.
But you're good with conditions 1 through 5?
Right.
Okay. With, with staff conditions listed 1 through 5.
All right, motion by Mr. Ayers to approve conditional zoning 24 dot 10 dot 01. Second by Laurie, all in favor? Eyes have it? All right, thank you, Max.
Here, I'd like to...
Yeah, that's my job. I got it. All right, conditional zoning ZZ 24 dot 10 01 requests us from Assembly of God, seeks a conditional zoning change from SFR dash 1 to CZMU 1 for their 24.47 acre property at 6,800 Stevensville Road to accommodate existing non-permitted daycare and religious uses. Therefore, the town council hereby votes that the proposed conditional zoning amendment is consistent and reasonable with the comprehensive land use plan adopted on November 27, 2017, based on the goals and objectives set forth in the document promoting quality development and consistency with all state mandated land use regulations established through North Carolina General Statute 160D. The town council approves the proposed amendment and stated that the town council finds and determines that the conditional zoning amendment is consistent and reasonable with the key guiding principles, goals, and objectives of the comprehensive land use plans for the following reason. The proposed zoning change will not alter current use of the property and will not impact the surrounding area. The floodplain limits future development on the property, and three, maintains the current use, maintains the current use, protects surrounding properties. So all in favor?
Aye.
Wait, let me get a motion, I'm sorry.
I make a motion to approve the statement of consistency and...
All right, motion by Mr. Ayers, second by Mr. Shaw. All in favor? Eyes have it? All right, thank y'all.
So Mayor, can I just ask the manager, well, he's talking to Aaron right now, but that's fine, no finishing, that's okay. My, my question is, could we just ask the manager to do some homework on the noise ordinance as it relates to this issue? I would suggest perhaps requesting, I think that's what we'd be doing, requesting the church to provide a log of hours that it's perhaps used for the next six months. Would you do that for us? And compare that to...
I can do that, and I can talk to the neighbors.
Please, yeah. Yeah.
Make changes and see the time.
Yeah, and perhaps ask the neighbors to sort of catalog for themselves six months. Let's just compare what's truly happening out there. That would be my recommendation, my request, I guess.
All righty. Next up is Aaron, Annexation 57, Mill Creek.
Yes, sir. The manager... This, just to remind you, when you receive an annexation, there is a state statute process that we have to go through, and the fir, this is just the first step in that process. And all that step is, is having the council tell me to actually investigate a petition that we've received. That's all that's, this step means. We have received an annexation petition for 12 point, approximately 12.5 acres. It's kind of behind the biscuit bill on 74. And it is, it is, it brings within some resoning, which Max will bring to you later, but right now, we're just talking about the annexation. We received that petition, and the resolution that is in your packet is just to direct me as the clerk to investigate the petition that we've received.
And it does touch our town?
Yes, sir.
All right, the request is to approve, or, well, we have to approve it, the resolution directing the clerk to investigate a petition received under North Carolina General Statute 168 dash 31. Can I get a motion to approve? Motion by Mr. Shaw, second by Mr. Richardson, all in favor? Eyes have it? All right, thank you.
As long as they don't mess with the biscuit bill.
Well, that's an Indian...
Y'all can deal with that with the resoning.
All righty. Committee applications considerations. Where did I put them? So we have two. So for the community committee, we have Ms. Amber Joyner-Hill. Is she here? I don't think so. And it's, it's a full member, and the term ends 331 dash 26. So we had her application there. She's lived into town a couple years. Do I have any questions?
Do you know her? Okay. I mean, has she been to one of the meetings?
Before I bring it to you that they had seen?
Oh, sorry, yes.
Okay.
There was someone at the last one, I'm trying, I was blanking.
Okay, okay, it's okay. I was just looking for opinion.
All right. Well, can I get a motion to approve Ms. Hill? Motion by Mr. Shaw, second by Mr. Hall to appoint Amber Joyner-Hill to the community committee. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, next up is our planning board. We have an alternate, first alternate position open. Are, are you Mr. Watson? No, it's Mr. Watson, he's not here?
He's not here.
Okay. This term ends 331 28. He lives in, in Shanamar on Donegal. So, Jeannie, you know him? You give him a thumbs up? Okay?
All right.
All right, anybody have any questions? All right, motion by Mr. Richardson to approve Mr. Watson, second by Mr. Shaw, all in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have it?
So he's an alter, he's gonna be an alternate? Is the planning board full?
Yes, sir.
It's full. All righty. All right, Mr. Coffey. Parks and Recreation, Greenway Gates.
Good evening, council. All right. So tonight, I'm here at your request to present options for the Blair Mill Greenway, where it intersects with Stevensville Road. Just in background, after the grand opening of the Greenway, a council member shared concerns over the possibility of users not slowing down as they approached Stevensville Road here, causing them to get into traffic pretty quickly. So to address that issue, we installed two swivel gates. You can see one of them here, spaced so that it created kind of a slalom to slow people down. They had to zigzag through it, and it slowed them as they approached the, the road there. That created a new concern, because the two gates from a distance, it made it look like the Greenway was blocked off. So, we have been requested to research alternatives for that. So I'm here to present those tonight and get your input on the moving forward. So, staff have brainstormed and researched ideas. We've also reached out to other entities with greenways with similar issues as far as meeting up with busy roads. We, sorry, reading my script here. And other greenway professional, or trail professionals, park professionals for input as well. The first alternative we have here is just creating visual engagement. This was an idea suggested by other entities. Basically, we're, we would install signage. They suggest something kind of elaborate and big that's gonna draw the eye of especially young kids, or possibly even art sculptures, or one thing that we thought about was moving the geometric shapes from Stallings Park over there to create a spot that hopefully the kids' curiosity would be piqued, and they would stop and take a look at these things, instead of advancing toward the road. Or, in Athens, Georgia, one of the guys mentioned, they use those as what they call rally points. So the rally point just gives the parent an opportunity to tell them, "Hey, meet me at the sign," or "Meet me at the sculpture," so that they stop before advancing into the road until the adult can stop, can step up, get to them, and escort them across. The next option would be a bit more expensive, but it would be just enhancing the current gates by adding panels to the existing gates. We would pay someone to design and install panels, and that would just help give a more of visual separation of the gates from a distance, so it'd be more clear there's a space in between they could go around. Another option, this is actually what most municipalities that we contacted, this is their approach, kind of a minimalist approach. In talking about the lay of the land, many of them referred to the slope, the incline as you approach the road being a natural barrier slowing down those individuals. One municipality in Indiana mentioned they actually had to remove gates because a cyclist hit one and suffered some serious injuries. They also worked with trail professionals and the American Association of State Highways and transportation officials who removed, or who recommended removing the gates as well, and going to kind of a minimalist, minimalist approach. This would be the lowest cost alternative, because all that would be handled in-house. Repurposing the gates that are there will find a different use for them, and reinstalling the bollard that would prevent vehicle entry. The final alternative we came up with, kind of best of both worlds, we would remove the gates, removing the visual barrier that the Greenway is closed, and install speed humps to effectively slow down the users. We would space the speed humps, as you can see here in this illustration, to allow for ADA accessibility. If we completely blocked off the Greenway with a speed hump, it wouldn't be accessible. So we would create that slalom again that we had with the gates, allowing a wheelchair or mom with the stroller, if they chose not to go over the speed bumps. They have access to go, go around. This would be something we could put closer to the roadway as well, which would slow them. It would, it wouldn't allow them to pick speed back up as they approached the road.
Is that last one, can y'all do that in-house?
Yes. Researching the cost of speed humps, at maximum, you're looking at $350 a hump, but on average, probably 100 to 150 per hump. And hardware for reinstalling the bollard, 20 bucks tops. So, pretty, pretty low cost there as well, so...
Were there a lot of complaints about the gates that caused this difficulty?
I don't know that we received any direct phone calls.
No, it was me. So, and I didn't mean for it to turn into a presentation necessarily, but I appreciate the thought. I went out there to walk my dog, and I parked at Blair Mill Park, and I walked out, and I'm like, "Man, the park's closed," or the Greenway's closed, because both gates were in their staggered position. I'm like, if I'm a person who didn't know any better, I would think that, huh, they must be closed for the day.
Yeah, it's a fair concern.
Yeah, thank you.
Both concerns are fair.
So, I, yeah, so I get the safety. I, I don't think it's aesthetically as pleasing with the gates in the, in the safest position for a child coming down. And David, council member Shaw remarked to me, "The bicyclist hitting it means it did its job." So I, I get this. So this, I, I like the speed humps. If I had to make a choice, I think they're cost-effective and visually appealing. But, but again, it, it was me causing all the trouble.
Just one person can cause this much trouble?
It's no trouble, no trouble.
I, I work off the theory that I'm, that if, if I struggle with something, that, that other people might as well.
And yet, nobody, nobody mentioned this at all.
It's fine, okay.
How about the cheapest option of all, just get them open? Something that's signed on one of them that says, "We're open, and here's our hours."
Yeah, I think that's...
Right back where they were.
That's reasonable. Yeah, that's reasonable. They, if people read the sign, working in parks, yep.
Kids are gonna read signs, but the parents that are with them...
Should. They should.
You don't have an image, though, of both gates.
I don't, unfortunately, I thought for sure we had an image before the one got damaged.
Paint one brown and one green, and they'll look...
And differentiate. There we go.
But, but there is a sign that even a three- or four-year-old can read, "Stop."
Yeah, yeah.
Hopefully, we're not letting two and one-year-olds out, unsupervised on the trail.
Hopefully.
What happened to the one that got damaged just for...
I didn't see any evidence of a vehicle pushing against it, but something pushed up against it with enough force, it broke the hinge on it. So we've got it ready for repair.
Is there a picture in the, the opening day? Is, was that before the gate?
That's before the gate, correct.
I don't want to belabor the time. It, to me, it's a visual thing and implies closed. I'll stand by that, by the way. I don't want to spend more money on it necessarily.
Even if you look back at the, the one, a couple back where only the one is there, I mean, if you go back to the, where there's just one gate still there...
Oh, yeah.
I mean, if there was a second one there from this shot, I mean, it would look closed. So, and, I mean, I could see that. Well, I mean, I know we go to Squirrel Lake Park when we, for some walking, and they do have a gate that's very similar to that, that they do use to close it off at night.
And we took a field trip to, I forget the name of the Greenway over here, and Matthews, just right off of Old Monroe Road. But it comes very close to a very busy road, and it's almost like an alley they've created with cinder block walls as you approach the road. And it's a wooden structure, so you have to go around it as you approach the road. But again, the visibility, from the time you hit that to the road, it's a pretty short space. So I understand needing something to slow users there, because you don't have... Approaching the stop sign here, you can see up the road pretty well, but in their case, you don't have that luxury, and cars don't have that luxury of seeing you from a distance. I think you get a little bit of better visibility off of this Greenway.
All right, we got some options. For Brad's question.
Mine, too. Put an open sign on it. Put it back.
Do we got to go and change the sign?
When is it ever closed?
Yeah.
Put "Open" and put "Dawn to dusk."
Yeah, and potential weather events.
Or daylight hours, or whatever the restriction is.
Dawn to dusk is our current wording.
But what would the trail look like? Go back to that without the speed humps?
Yeah. Well, it'd go back to that, except it would have the second gate there, that image on the top.
So to your point, I mean, this was your idea to begin with. It was a good idea. A sign's not going to stop a four-year-old from...
No, it'll do the job of what it was intended to do, is stop little squirts from going right on through there. But what the adults that are walking up to the sign, up to the gate, are going to say, oh, it looks closed, but it's actually open, because they can read.
Well, now, where would you put the sign to stop a child from going through it?
No, it's not a sign. It would be, the gates would look exactly like they were. Like that, and then put a sign.
On the gate.
Either on it, or just before it, on the poles right there.
Oh, so you're for keeping the staggered gates?
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. I thought you wanted to remove those.
No, I do not.
I'm okay with signage if that will accomplish it as well. I'm not going to be the one who is blamed for accidents. I like the idea of Art and the rallying point for parents. I'm okay with the signage. I would just say, let's... I like that.
Yeah.
I don't know. I'm just, I mean, just put something out there, like, so that anyone that's walking up to it knows, oh, this is what this is. It doesn't mean it's closed.
I like it. I like it.
My recommendation on whatever sign you put there, Nick, is don't attach it to the gate itself, because then that blocks the view. Say a four-year-old's coming down on their bike, and then something might be on the other side of that gate. Put it on the side of the sidewalk. That'd be my recommendation. But y'all research and do what y'all think.
Yeah. And I am reminded of the same person in Indiana that referenced the person hitting the gate. They did also note an issue if users are approaching from opposite ends at the same time. Some issues with, yeah, getting people through there. That was just another concern with the gate system.
Military stops up there pops up.
I don't think that's...
I'm kidding. I'm kidding.
All right.
So the option is, we're going to keep the gates as is, and then just attach some signage?
Will do.
We'll let the manager decide, the park staff.
All right, yeah, y'all make the decision.
I do appreciate the research itself.
Somebody still wants the speed home?
No.
We're good with what we just decided.
All right. Thank you, Nick.
You're welcome. I'm here for farmers market as well.
Oh, good.
All right, keep going.
Oh, sorry. All right. So now I've got a recap of our 2024 farmers market, as well as information on this year's market, and then we're going to be asking for a fee proposal as well. So 2024, we had 22 Saturday markets. They began May 4th and ran through August 31st for the summer market. And then fall markets, we only had three of those, September, October. The market averages, there were an estimated 65 shoppers and 14 vendors for the summer markets, 25 and five for the fall markets. The fall market was cut short due to crops being destroyed from weather and army worms. And then we took a break in between the two seasons, and that seemed to cause a loss of momentum from the customer end of things. 2025, the market dates will be beginning May 3rd, running every Saturday through October 25th, with the exception of the Saturday of Stallings Fest, or 50 Fest this year. So that'll be a total of 25 total markets, plus a new addition to this year, which will be a fall pumpkin patch put on by Sunny Day Markets. We are requesting a $75 per month fee for the use of the grass lot over here, totaling in $450. This will help entice Sonny and Stallings, who operates the market, to ensure vendor participation, as well as offset some of the costs for lot maintenance. That's it. And there have been preliminary discussions with Montana Noel of Sunny Day Markets about the potential fee, and she's on board already. She's just waiting for it to be official. Questions?
Well, I'll kick it off. I'll kick it off, and I guess my thought is, is that I... The farmers market is part of a larger program where we're trying to entice people to come to downtown and start, you know, kind of visiting downtown. And it seems like the farmers market was relatively successful last year. I just, I think that it feels like they've been a great partner in helping us achieve and maintain a town goal. I'm just not, and generally, for $450, I'm just not very... I don't feel like I'm in favor of this. I feel like they're helping us as much as we're helping them. Kind of, I know it's a slow progression goal, but at the same token, it's, to me, this is way more about meeting the goal of driving people downtown than making a handful of dollars. And if you tell me that it's going to be the difference between really getting quality people there, I mean, quality vendors there, then I might be swayed. But right this minute, I just, I feel like it's... For $450, it's just not, I don't think it's worth the potential to... I think they're doing us a favor to some degree, or at least, I feel like it's helping us achieve a goal. And it's not like we're trying to make money off of the farmers market. That's my thought.
All right. Thank you, Stephen. Anybody else?
Yeah. The market averages 65 shoppers each Saturday. That low? High? It seems low, if that's an average for...
I'll be honest, I'm not familiar with farmer's markets and their customer base.
Exactly. 100, maybe more.
It has been there, though, for 30 years, or 40 years.
I know, I was thinking...
Yeah.
Want to get there, and I'm not sure, I'm really not sure what charging... Of all the things, it's not a very large number for us.
The key to get more people is the vendors you bring in.
Exactly. How will this entice them to get better vendors, or how does this actually work for them?
I believe the thought is them paying some money upfront, just so they can recover that cost. I'm not sure what they charge their vendor fee, per vendor, but the idea is that they'll be enticed to make sure they make at least that $450 back from their vendors. So it's going to be, ensure that we bring vendors here every Saturday.
I think I get what you're saying, and I'm not opposed to this. In fact, I think it ought to be a little bit more expensive, but I get the nominal fee. Sometimes free means lack of quality. Free means, I don't really care about it. Free means, really don't have to show up today. And even a nominal amount of money might just plant the seed that this is a real effort. I'd be in favor of this. I'd be in favor of sending the message that we'll do this every year for the next decade, and the fees will go up, but we're going to start small. So I think it's fine, especially if the vendor coordinator is fine with it. It does seem to legitimize this, and giving it away just maybe feels like it's a throwaway. That's my two cents. I'd be okay to vote for this.
And the monthly fee, they're responsible for the lot maintenance?
No, the... So they would be responsible... We handle lot maintenance. We paint the lot monthly, if not more often, depending on how quickly the lines are growing out. They would be responsible for marketing the farmers market. Outside of what we do on our end, just Facebook posts, Instagram posts, they would be advertising all, across all of their social media as well, and in their permanent location in Indian Trail. They supervise the setup and breakdown of the event. So, yeah, lot maintenance, that's on us. And that would just help offset some of the costs for paint, fill-in, and ruts.
Right.
So how are they, the Sunny Day Market? If they have a location in Indian Trail, I mean, Saturday mornings is when people are going to go, are they managing two of them?
Yeah, they have staff at that physical location as well. But it's not really a farmers market. It's just...
Produce shed.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a little produce stand. Like a semi-permanent structure, produce, one big shed. Not vendors with art and that sort of things either.
I don't really have an issue with... It doesn't even seem like enough. I would hire, but...
All right. Any other discussion? Is everybody good with the fees, the schedule? All right. What's the pleasure to council on the fee, on the recommendation by the...
I make a motion to approve the Sonny and Stallings LLC $450.
$450? All righty. Motion by Mr. Richardson to approve the recommendation of $450 to... Second by Laurie. All in favor? All opposed? And the only thing I'd tell them, Nick, is, one complaint I get is, is not enough produce.
That is, I'm not sure it's in this copy that I have here, but that has been discussed with Montana about bringing in more produce. I think they said a percentage of the vendors have to be fresh produce, not store-bought and sold here produce, but fresh produce.
I think that would increase it.
Yes.
Fresh produce is there.
Yeah, I agree.
All right, thank you, Nick.
All right. Thank y'all for your time.
All right. Next up is the FY 25-26 Council Priorities, and I'll turn it over to Alex.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to thank everybody for your time on Saturday. I know that's not easy to give, and we're grateful as part of the annual retreat. The priorities this year are similar to the past several years, and I want to list them off for the record, but also note, we're going to be coming back with more of a strategic plan, hopefully at our next meeting in March, that has the priorities and creates a list of strategic action steps with SMART goals, specific, measurable, et cetera. And allows us to make sure, not only we've got these broad goals, but strategically, we're setting those micro-goals under those, which is the key to taking one step at a time towards achieving those goals. So with that being said, the goals for 2025 that the board has agreed on, then to focus on long-range financial planning. And really, we talked about what long means. Really, that's kind of long to mid-range, if you will. We also want to explore sewer alternatives, continue to support and enhance Union West Business Park. We view that as an economic engine and a potential for growth in the town. Given the town is so heavily residential, it's really an opportunity to increase our tax base there and help the entire tax base, including our residential properties, and continue to subsidize them. To continue to pursue town center creation, there's some exciting things we've been working on, and to continue to maximize positive development around the hospital and any potential future light rail. Also, one of the goals that was considered is, with the sewer capacity issues that we're facing, especially in the Crooked area, which is more towards the middle of the town, and where a lot of these priorities are focused, what the board wants to look at is also to consider, all right, with our adopted plans and studies, what kind of things are not dependent on sewer capacity? The board expressed a concern for not just sitting on our hands, if sewer capacity is a potential to improving Stallings, but what other things can we, as a town, do to improve the town, even if sewer capacity is an issue? So now, there were a variety of things that came up, greenways, sidewalks, parks. And so that'll be a priority that the board mentioned as well. There was also one other thing that I wanted to mention that was referenced as important, but not identified as a formal priority, was continue to ensure and encourage completion of critical state intersection projects. Now, that's more NCDOT's primary responsibility, but we want to monitor those and make sure that they continue to move forward and communicate that out to our residents as well. So that's a high-level snapshot of the priorities, as I understand them. I would ask the board to please add anything that we'd like, and again, express my gratitude to you all for your time, as well as our facilitator, Mr. Walton, and as always, Ms. Nichols. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Alex. Yeah, thank you for all your work on these priorities and putting together, you and Aaron and staff. So any questions for Alex on any of these priorities we discussed on Saturday? Let's make it official. Can I get a motion to approve, motion by Mr. Shoal?
It's moved.
Second by Mr. Hall. All in favor?
Aye.
Let's have it. All righty. Anything we need to discuss? I know the agenda's over, but we can always add it, so.
What did you go for there?
Over? No. It was on FanDuel. All right. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Mr. Ayers, second by Mr. Hall. All in favor? Let's have it. Thank you all.